Your seats, we're going to resume the meeting, restart the meeting here. We ended, we finished unfinished business and now that brings us to item number 10, new business. And the first item of new business, item A, is ordinance 180313A. This is the ordinance that's amending section 92042A, which deals with residential vacation rentals. And this is within the zoning regulations and regarding the use of residences as vacation rentals. And a proposed change to the 2017-18 fee schedule for residential rentals. So, we have, Brad is with us and he is going to give us kind of an overview of what we're talking about here and bring to us the recommendations.
Thank you, your honor. Good evening, commissioners, Mr. Manager and Counselor. So excited to be here. I hopped up during the public comment and was ready to go.
You may go home.
As the mayor so adeptly summarized, this is a look at a change to the existing permitting procedure for the vacation rental operating permits or the residential vacation rentals. They were adopted in 2009 and initially started out as an administrative endeavor. There were, I'm a little bit fuzzy on what happened, but I do know there was some litigation that made the process move toward the Board of Adjustment as a supplement in that litigation. And so it's been there since, as I understand it, about 2012. But it's a popular program and it's gaining popularity, especially with the folks from the World Equestrian Games getting ready to come to town. Just for a little background, in 2012, when it started with the Board of Adjustment, there were 21 permits issued. In 2013, there were 13 issued. In 2014, there were 27 issued. Don't know what happened in '15, there were only five issued, 11 in 2016 and 23 in 2017. As Commissioner Weber stated earlier, to date, we have 300 active vacation rental operating permits in the town. The town has been working toward a minimum change in this process. It's about 2013. Commissioner Weber had a draft of an ordinance that started down that road, was never adopted. And as, I stated in my memorandum, right after the town manager came onboard, there was a retreat at the Utron International Equestrian Center where the, there was some impetus to change this way this business is done, the permitting of the residential vacation rentals. And it was, the updating of that program was given to the Community Development Department for execution during the 2017-2018 fiscal year at the most recent retreat, as I understand Our town attorney, William Morgan, has weighed in on this. He has a very well-written memo and legal opinion that is one of your exhibits. I believe it's exhibit number two. His closing statement in that, and I've added some paraphrasing with his permission, the alternative, and he basically advises that the alternative with the least amount of risk is to eliminate permit requirements. For example, obtaining local legislation similar to the town of Cornelius, or perhaps considering a less onerous permit requirement such that it be a ministerial administrative decision as opposed to a quasi-judicial decision, i.e. require a zoning permit as opposed to a conditional use permit. Requiring that permit would be a lesser impediment to the applicant. So that's the legal opinion of your town attorney. The regulation changes that are being brought forward are essentially none. In the ordinance, I was named project manager on this. I basically took the old ordinance. I think it's important that the Board knows and realizes that there has never been, to the best of my knowledge and all the research that I could do, and confirming with the Community Development Director, who's 10 years, 14 years here, none of these permits have ever been denied. The Board of Adjustment has placed conditions using their discretionary authority, and those conditions have usually been based upon parking or the always question of why does the number of bedrooms as requested by the applicant are not being reflected on the property record card? The Board is generally would say, you know, in examples, the applicant wants four, the property record card says three. If you can produce that information to the zoning administrator, we'll allow him to let you have four, but in the meantime, only permit three. That's an example of discretionary ability that the Board of Adjustment has been able to employ. Moving into this ministerial realm, that would not be an option. And so there are a couple of changes that I threw in here that have survived the vetting of the zoning and planning board, and I think there would be very helpful in giving clarity to the zoning official when making the decision from a ministerial, you know, I call it the Joe Friday thing, just the facts, ma'am, you know, exactly what you can and can't do. Those two changes are that there's a new requirement for one parking space for every two bedrooms. Parking is a big deal and it always has been a big deal with the Board and for good reasons. We have narrow streets, we have steep slope areas, we have, you know, we just need to have, to assure that there's adequate parking. Just because you have four bedrooms or five bedrooms, you know, can you park everybody successfully there? I came up with one bedroom for every two, excuse me, one parking space for every two bedrooms. It just seemed to be a good number. Right now, the current residential zoning ordinance, you build a 1,200 square foot house, you have to have one parking place, one off-street parking place. You build a 3,500 square foot house, you have to have one off-street parking place. So the somewhat quasi-commercial element to this, it just seemed to be a good, it just viscerally felt right to say for every two bedrooms, you have to have one parking place. The other requirement was the ongoing concern that the Board has had considering the, a copy of the property record card shall be provided by the applicant. And the nexus for that is, you know, to assure basically that the improvement in operations permits for whatever sanitary facilities are on site are adequate for, you know, the number of bedrooms being proposed. And that's not the bailiwick of the town to enforce that matter, but it is, it is a requirement, it is North Carolina administrative code for if you increase a bedroom, you, and you, for example, it's just a known fact that the, a three-bedroom house can have a 900 gallon septic tank. When you move to four, it's got to have a 1,000 gallon septic tank. So little nuances like that. I think it's important that the property record card relate exactly the same number of bedrooms that the applicant is asking for. And if there are some, and we have found some errors in the property record card reporting system, again, that would probably just be, you know, as a ministerial, in a ministerial capacity, I would just have to say, you need to provide me that information officially from the county if you wanted to up that rate. The current ordinance has a little bit of, the way I incorporated it in the current ordinance, I'd like to have some discussion on that if the Board is equitable. The copy that went last through the zoning and planning board and that is in your packet, a little bit of an 11th-hour armchair quarterbacking, Shannon and I got together and said, you know, that might not get us where we need to go. So I'd like to discuss that if the Board is equitable when we get to that. At the January 23, 2018 meeting, it's interesting that I put this on as an agenda item at the, it was a town manager's idea and it's also supported by the late Philip Green of the North Carolina School of Government, where your Board of Adjustment is kind of your canary in the mine for just how your ordinances are working. And Philip Green was very adamant in his book, The Zoning Board of Adjustment is published by the school government, that, you know, it's perfectly okay and actually wise to get a recommendation if you, or if the Board itself wants to bring forth a recommendation to something that they see as a problem to do so. I put it on the agenda item at that meeting as an item of discussion. And as that discussion went through the meeting, it was, there was a motion brought forward to recommend that the council consider moving this back toward administrative oversight and regulatory overview. And that motion was seconded and passed unanimously. Do have the Board Chairman is in the audience here and Mr. Bay also of the Board is here as well this evening. At the February 20, 2018 meeting of the zoning and planning board, they recommended that staff finalize the amendment and forward to Town Council for consideration. Again, your exhibits are Mr. Morgan's, excuse me, Attorney Morgan's exhibit number two is his treatise on short vacation, short-term rentals, which I think should be published. Exhibit number three is a memorandum from the Community Development Director, Mr. Baldwin. Mr., Commissioner Weber did a really fantastic job back in 2013 to try to bring this matter back into the realm of administrative oversight. You know, there were, and it's really well-written and really well-done. One or two things in there gave our attorney some pause, and that is kind of captured in exhibit three by Mr. Baldwin. Again, it's no slide on Commissioner Weber's efforts. It was, it's just a matter of legalese and a legal application of some things. Exhibit four also, I want to draw the Board's attention, and that's another point to this matter and is the main point to this matter specifically, are the application costs and the costs that are borne by the town and cost overall that are, what it cost to permit this program through the Board of Adjustment as a conditional use permit. I stipulate to what's in exhibit four, but essentially, we're losing about $240 per every VROP application. It costs the staff time about $275 for each VROP application processed. During the Marine Commission meeting, that was what I was working on over here tonight. I've got five before the Board this coming month, and that's just getting the mailings and the postings and all that goes with that. The second page of this memo by Mr. Baldwin, which is also exceptionally well-done, he's got a copy of the spreadsheet in here that really breaks down well, not only the staff time and the cost, but some of the, and he talks about it, excuse me, but the, our Board of Adjustment is a diligent bunch. Many of you haven't been on that Board, have former chairs on that Board. You know, you give these guys, you tell them you've got these VROP applications and they're gone. They're in the car and they're spending their time, their gas, they're depreciating the value of their vehicle by going and visiting all these sites in an effort to provide a good, you know, a good review for the town. So that's also an additional expense that is not captured totally in this. This is more, well, the staff and volunteer hours are what he, he does capture that in there. So I take that back. Exhibit five is your recommendation that's signed by Chairman Hook of the Board of Adjustment. And exhibit six is your actual ordinance as proposed to the Board. As is standard practice, strike-throughs are deletions, underlines are additions. I don't know if this is a good time for us to have discussion, or I'd like to go ahead and bring up that one section if I could where Shannon and I had a little bit of a 11-hour thought on, if you guys don't mind, concerning. And this is section 92024A5A, which you find in your copy of your ordinance. Let's see, that's page one, two, three. Yes, or page four of the ordinance, about mid-page. Occupancy limits. And the underlying section is, and I'll read the whole sentence and catch the underline, "Bedrooms used in calculating occupancy limits shall be taken from the occupation as affirmed by the owner-manager and the new addition is compared with bedroom information as listed on the Rutherford County Tax Assessor's Property Information Card." We feel like the statement comparison is a little weak and it actually might have an element, it might infer an element of discretion. Maybe a better way to say that would be something to affect same sentence. "Bedrooms used in calculating occupancy limits shall be taken from the application as affirmed by the owner-manager and shall be the same as the number of bedrooms as listed on the Rutherford County Revenue Department Property Information Card to also assure the sufficiency of the wastewater system on site." So there's a nexus there as to why you're asking for it, and there's an explanation. Also, on this version, the Rutherford County Assessor is now the Rutherford County Department, Revenue Department. So we need to make that change to bring that up contemporary. Other than that, the other two changes I spoke of and some small, top of page four, item I, it's a strike-through there. We couldn't figure out what that meant, so we just got rid of it. It was something that was written wrong. I don't know what exactly it was supposed to mean. So I'm getting ready to start rambling, so I'm going to hush and let you guys ask me some questions.
Well, the nine I, the reason that information was there was because somebody coming in and setting up a new LLC, new business, and setting up the rentals, they would have to prove, because they could not prove that they're registered yet, so they're going to have to get that set up. So that's why it was there originally.
Okay.
Obviously, I'm not opposed to going to an administrative process because I'd like to add a minute in '13.
Yes, sir.
And that's what that would have done. The only thing that, and with the change where you're now matching the property information card and mandating that with what's on the application, the rationale, why we always insisted on that was because of tax basis. If they claim they have five bedrooms and we only show three on property information card, we said, well, if you want five bedrooms for rental, you need to go back to the county and get that amended on your property information card, which is going to affect the taxes and the tax base to come back and get it approved. And that's why that's important.
Okay.
Is that tax basis. The big thing, one of the big things about the old ordinance was the notice provided to property owners. And I understand there's no state mandate, but that does not mean it cannot be done. And if I recall from reading Mr. Morgan's comments, there are communities that he referenced in there that do it. I'm willing to say, and I understand this does not provide any notice, and that's okay if there's, and there's another alternative I'm going to propose, and that is, we would then, if we approve this as-is and somebody has a problem with one that's been approved, if some citizen has a problem with one that's been approved, their only recourse right now is to appeal officially and pay $300 to do that. I think we can establish a vacation rental operating permit appeal separately at zero cost, so citizens don't have to pay to appeal it. But it's still an official appeal, and that would be after the fact. And I'm okay with that. A separate appeal for vacation rental operating permits only at zero on our fee schedule. And I'm okay with the fees that have been proposed as-is. This is a big cost savings in the way of man-hours and work and volunteer hours, huge cost savings that, for years, of course, I felt like were unnecessarily spent.
I think that's a-
Not to discourage the good work done, but we got into a rubber stamp mode practically to where every one of them was five minutes at the most, 10 minutes, is done, done, done. Once in a while, we pick up on a little thing, but you're very capable of doing that.
Well, I appreciate your accolades there, sir, and I thank you. I think that's a good idea. The only, the only reason that the variance, that the appeal fees are so high, as I understand it, is, are the advertising costs that are associated with that. But again, that is, that is the discretion of the governing body, how they want to do that. One of the matters, and I'll just throw this out as an aside, one of the things that was brought up in the zoning and planning board meeting that was, that was received quite well, and this, Mr. Morgan brought this to us, in the Board of Adjustment enabling legislation by, in the North Carolina General Statute, specifically 168, 388B1, they've got the section that talks about constructive notice. And it reads like this, "It shall be conclusively presumed that all persons withstanding to appeal have constructive notice of the decision from the day a sign containing the words 'zoning decision' or 'subdivision decision' or 'VROP decision' in letters at least six inches high and identifying the means to contact an official for information about the decision is prominently posted on the property." That is, that it prominently posted on the property that is the subject of the decision, provided the sign remains on the property for at least 10 days. Posting of signs is not the only form of constructive notice. Any such posting shall be the responsibility of the landowner or applicant. This is North Carolina General Statute. Verification of the posting shall be provided to the official who made the decision. They take a picture of it, they email it to me, I posted the yard. Absent ordinance provision to the contrary, posting of signs shall not be required. This brings back to what Mr. Morgan mentioned about other jurisdictions requiring some sort of notice to be posted. So that was received quite interestingly by the Planning and Zoning Board, and, you know, we even talked about incorporating that into the application and having that on the certificate of occupancy, where once you receive, when you initially fill out the application, there's a section in there that tells you how you, if you, if this is granted to you, how you can provide constructive notice. And also, in the certificate of occupancy, you could have this on there. If this was granted on this date, should you wish to provide constructive notice pursuant to the North Carolina General Statute 168, 388B1, these are the parameters. The zoning and planning board really liked that idea. And I just, I'm just throwing that out there as maybe something might give you a little bit more solace in the lack of notice.
Are you recommending then that we do provide that constructive notice or no?
It would not be the town. It would be, it would be the applicant. I'm recommending, I'm perfectly willing to, if this does go to administrative, it will be, what we're envisioning now is it being on a certificate of zoning compliance where you have now new construction, remodel, deck, other residential vacation rental. And then parentheses, see page four. And page four has all this information on it. You're how, everything that you're required to do. And also, in that section would be an incorporation of this constructive notice.
My whole intent, and you mentioned something early in your presentation that I would like to question too, or ask you a question. My whole intent is, back when this thing went through litigation and it first came out, it was an extremely divisive affair for the community. And there's still a lot of folks that strongly oppose vacation rentals. And I'll say for the public, I'm not opposed to them. I'm not opposed to this becoming administrative, but I don't want to take away from the citizens' the opportunity to make their disagreement known, and I don't think we should be charging them 300 bucks to do that.
Absolutely.
Now, an appeal, obviously, in a formal appeal, has to be filed with facts and evidence. The onus is on them submitting it.
Yes, sir.
And if a determination is made that, and if it's allowed, that this is a frivolous appeal based on emotion, and that's what the Board decides, then so will it.
Yes.
Then the onus is upon the citizen to take it to the Superior Court if they wish to appeal further, and that's at their expense. We have nothing to do with that. But I am not opposed to a free or zero-cost vacation rental operating permit appeal on our fee schedule.
And we'd also need to put that within 30 days or give us a time limit for that appeal as well.
Right.
I think that would be appropriate, yes, sir.
How's that going to be noticed?
You in a position to that?
How will that be noticed?
It could be noticed after it's approved. We do the standard letter to the adjoining property owners like we've done with the cases before, and that's that simple letter. I mean, the cost savings that, the cost savings that's going to occur from doing this administratively as opposed to the way we were doing it is more than sufficient to do that. Or, I don't know, to do like we did a limit before, we had a, within 400 feet or within 100 feet of the adjoining property. Maybe it says adjoining property owners only, just saying, hey, this vacation, or a simple sign on the property, the constructive notice, notify the applicant and tell them you have to put this up there by our ordinance. So something to that effect.
Excuse me, Commissioner Weber. Mr. Morgan, do you see an issue of having a separate appeal for VROPs and then refunding money?
I don't have a problem with it so long as the appeal procedure for all appeals to the Board of Adjustment of an administrative decision, which are set forth in the statute, as long as, the only difference is the fee. I mean, you still follow all the steps in the statute, how to process appeals.
Yeah, it would be a formal appeal, following the procedure of the law, everything.
What about this, what about this idea that for all appeals, that if someone were to appeal and the BOA grant the appeal, that they get a refund for all appeals, not just VROPs? That way, you're not separating a VROP appeal from other appeals.
What's wrong with having two different types of appeals?
That would work. I mean, I don't have, there's not a legal problem with that if the town chose to-
Just throw it out.
Pursue that as a policy. It may encourage though, you know, this isn't really a legal thing, but a zero-cost appeal might encourage-
Frivolous.
-frivolous appeals.
I understand.
Just because of, somebody doesn't like somebody or whatever.
So, okay, well, then maybe the cost and refund if you win. You know, you pay for the appeal just like any other appeal, and if you win your case before the BOA, then the money's refunded to you.
You would have to have, maybe you had a good appeal.
Yeah, that would eliminate the frivolous appeals.
Right.
That was my point.
Yeah.
Do it for all, all appeals, not just VROPs.
Ultimately, it would not cost them if they have a worthwhile case. Ultimately, it wouldn't.
So that would be a broader change in the planning and zoning process for all appeals. And would that then be handled outside of this motion that deals very narrowly with-
You can take this up as-is or with any changes to this, and we can come back with a separate change to the, or we could do it all at once, but we can't do it tonight.
I think it's a matter of changing your fee schedule. You can just have verbiage on your fee schedule.
Exactly. You don't have to change the zoning ordinance.
That's right. It's a fee schedule issue, a note on your fee schedule, basically says if you're successful in winning your appeal, you get a refund.
So if you were going to go that route, Commissioner Weber, you're okay with this the way this is worded, which gives people the ability to appeal, but not at no charge? Or is there a noticing thing that's missing here to this?
No, no, the basic ordinance gives everybody the option to appeal the decisions and can appeal administrative decisions and so on. That's not the issue. If we did a zero, then we'd have to make a change to the fee schedule, which we're going to already do anyway with the price, making these administrative. If we leave the appeal at $300, then they appeal, and where we would have to do it is somehow either might be zoning, it might be policy about refunding the money should they win it.
It seems like to me that if you roll that into a separate motion, pass the ordinance, but if you, if you're so inclined, also have a separate-
I think that would be fine to do a separate motion on that, because that's not something that requires public hearing anyway.
That's right. You're just talking about the fee schedule.
Well, with the noticing now, no fine.
So you pay the fee, if you're successful in winning the appeal, you actually get a refund for all appeals.
Have we settled the noticing issue?
Yeah, I wasn't talking all appeals. I was talking vacation rental.
I think there would be some, you know, I don't know off the top of my head, but I think what you're saying is to treat all appeals the same, so we don't get into why vacation rentals free if you win, and appealing my neighbor's fence being too high or something, just anything else, you don't get it back, and it would be more equitable.
And the fact of it is, the number of appeals that we process on are negligible. There are very few.
Yeah, second thought, I do agree with that. I'm okay with refund on any appeal. If the applicant that sends the, or submits the appeal wins, they get their money back. And it's 300 bucks on all of them.
So, just to wrap up on, so what about the noticing, that which is a completely different issue here? You had suggested some...
Well, we have to do something. Homeowners are aware that they've been approved, and, or citizens are aware they've been approved, and they, you know, they know they have the right to appeal. I don't know, what's the easiest solution? Do you want some time to think about that?
I'm really kind of leaning toward, you know, is the applicant's investment, is the applicant's efforts? And because the general statutes are pretty clear in spelling out a step-by-step process that goes to even the extent of the height of the letters that are required for the sign, you know, one of the concerns I have, Commissioner, is if, like, if this 10-day requirement, if the town is the one that's making that a requirement, as opposed to making it a very strong, bold, red suggestion on their, on their certificate of occupancy or on their permit, you know, then does that mean that there is a level of, I've got to go inspect every one of these houses that has, make sure they have their sign out every week? You know, that could be a little bit heavy-handed, I think.
Well, no. Not a sign every week.
Well, it's got to be up for 10 days.
Oh, yeah.
So, go ahead.
The planning board was adamant, and they were very clear that they felt like that, that for a permitted use, that whatever notice is required, for one permitted use, we should do the same for all the others. In other words, if we're not doing it for any other permitted use, then we shouldn't require, require notice for a vacation rental operating permit, for an RVR. From what I understand, the notice requirement is there for the owner. They basically, it starts at the shot clock. They post the notice.
That's correct. And otherwise, someone may not, might be able to prove that they didn't get notice for six months.
That's right. So this is something that the General Assembly put in place to help the owner, in this case the RVR, they can post the sign, they can send that to Brad, it starts a shot clock after 30 days.
Breathe easy after that.
It's a done deal. It's a done deal.
As I alluded to, it's protecting their interest.
It's right. So they've protected their investment. If we require notice, it's going to be a burden on Brad to go out there to check, to make sure the notice is there.
Well, that's if we require that type of notice.
Exactly.
If we required the simple letter to the adjoining property owners, after you mail it out. And you do that in mass print from your index that you've always done, and you just simply mail it out. You don't have to, it doesn't have to be certified to notify them that one's been approved, does it? No?
No, it doesn't.
So it's a simple postage letter.
There's a workload element to that.
I understand. If you say within 400 feet, and that gives you 25 adjoining property owners.
Well, I think you shouldn't require it to, beyond what those that would have standing to appeal anywhere.
And that's why I say adjoining.
Right. That's more definite than trying to draw the line, and, you know, maybe a slither of someone's.
That means if that permit holder's property touches another property, then those are the only ones that get the notice. And those are the, really, the only ones that would most likely have standing. We've dealt with that issue before, so.
Can we see how it goes if down the road we need to change it for some reason?
Yeah.
Certainly can do that.
All right, so, having had that good discussion, is there now a motion someone would like to make to adopt this proposed ordinance, and as it's stated, or in some modified form?
Well, do we need to amend it? Does it need to be an amendment saying that the notice would be provided to, or is that another part of the zoning regulations?
I don't think that the notice that we were just discussing would require another public hearing, because it's providing more protections, not taking...
I understand.
So you could just make a motion to adopt the ordinance as, as proposed by the staff, with the exception of adding a section to read as follows, you know, if we can go that far tonight, I mean, if you come up with a specific language you want to add.
Okay. Well, how about, how about if recommended approval of the ordinance, as prepared with the amendment that Brad discussed for that one paragraph, and bring that up, that'll be paragraph 92042.
A5A.
A5A. And, and so with that amendment, in addition, include a paragraph as appropriate, which requires notice to adjoining property owners only of any approved property. And that should be sent out immediately after it's approved. And it's simple, it's simple. Such and such property at this address has been approved as vacation rental. If you wish to appeal and feel that you have standing in this matter, you can do so.
Within so many days.
Within so many days, the cost for the appeal is, and if you win the appeal, your money will be refunded, in accordance with town policy. Something like that, very simple there.
If you want to set forth in the ordinance what the letter has to say?
No. No, that was a suggestion.
Okay. Got it.
I've got plenty of guidance there.
Yeah, yeah.
I've got plenty of guidance there.
So, is that motion clear?
Hold on a second.
All right. So we have a motion which amends, but adopts the ordinances with this amendment. We have a second by Commissioner Cameron. Any further discussion on that before we vote? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, that brings us to...
Thank you.
Yes, thanks, Brad. That was a very good presentation. New business item B.
How about the fee schedule?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, the second thing was, yeah, we have to have a motion to amend the 2017-18 land use fee schedule for residential vacation rentals from 255 to 190.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Commissioner Kilby makes the motion, a second. Second by Commissioner Cameron. Any further discussion? Nope. There being none.
Is it for all appeals, or just vacation rental?
Vacation rental, as I...
This isn't appeal, I think you're talking about the fee.
This is the actual permit rate. It's being reduced because of the administration.
Reduced from 255 to 190.
Right. And you voted on that already, right?
We are voting on it right now. Yeah, we've got a motion and a second. So we're about, we're discussing, we're about to vote. So all those in favor say aye.
I agree.
Opposed, same sign.
Okay.
Now we can move to item...
Well, now, now I'd like to make the motion that we establish a town policy that any appeals of an administrative decision with the zoning or the code enforcement officer, which currently costs $300, that if an applicant forms, files a formal appeal and wins their case, then their money is to be refunded.
On any appeal?
Any appeal.
What I said, I said any administrative appeal of the zoning administrator.
Let me throw one thing in. That person, I mean, there might be a situation where someone files an appeal and it gets successfully, that appeal, they win at the Board of Adjustment, but someone else withstanding petitions for a rid of search yard from the court.
Then they pay for that with the court, right?
I'm just saying, I would suggest waiting the refund for 30 days or so, so that we know that that Board of Adjustment decision is not itself appealed by someone else, or the town.
It's refunded after final adjudication.
Right.
Which could be...
Will usually be, there's not going to be a subsequent appeal if someone comes to the Board of Adjustment and wins their appeal. But what about the property owner that got the permit from the town, now being told he can't have it? He's going to appeal to court.
Then he's going to appeal to Superior Court.
Right. So you wouldn't want to refund the money until you know how it finally ends.
It's finally adjudicated, is that, that's...
Okay.
Not to make this further complicated, but just say it's not an immediate, here's your 300 back.
I amend my motion that I made to be refunded to the applicant upon final adjudication.
That sounds good.
Okay, and that's second, you accept that? Okay, good. So we have a motion amended and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Very good. All right, now, I think we can move to the item B, which is ordinance regulating parking in the electric vehicle charging station spaces. This is a suggested motion to adopt the ordinance 180313B, regulating parking electric vehicle charging spaces designated for the charging of electrical vehicles. Ron, is, any background? I mean, we just need to dedicate two spaces with signage.
That's correct. The chief had brought this to our attention. The attorney has provided some language for your review, and so we're recommending its approval.
Okay. All right, somebody want to make a motion, or to get this started, or?
Discussing first, a little bit of discussion.
Okay, you want to discuss it before?
Based on the proposed ordinance, you have a sign in your packet, which is the one that was approved by the Parks and Recreation Board. Brought this up, I asked, I said, please research and find out if our police can enforce this parking policy. And as a result, this is what has come out of it. But the drafted ordinance, on the second page under C, the last sentence says, "The sign shall also provide information on how owners of towed vehicles may retrieve the sign." So if we have to include that on the sign, that sign is going to be changed drastically. So...
They make a smaller sign that fits under this that says that, so we can, we can work on that.
So is that legally acceptable, the second sign, Mr. Morgan?
I'm sorry, I'm still trying to find it in my...
Okay. I'm looking at paragraph C, the last sentence.
Yeah, well, I borrowed that from the, or that idea, at least from the downtown parking in Asheville. The ordinance there requires, you know, if you're tow someone's vehicles, tell them at least a phone number, you know, they can call to get it back. So if I heard your...
The question is, is can there be a second sign underneath this? We're already talking that, I mean, this is going to be about the size of a handicap sign, and there's going to be two of them, one for each space. And that's what the Board has looked at, Parks and Recreation.
You can really do it any way you want to.
Okay, but the requirement in the ordinance says, "The sign shall provide information on how owners of towed vehicles can retrieve the vehicles."
That was my attempt to, to provide some level of early due process to them, where they can at least get their vehicle back.
We could say a second sign shall...
Yeah. Do it that way.
Okay. All right. And have anyone looked at these penalties set forth in 7199 to see if they're even up to date?
I looked at them, and I can't...
The process of this?
I looked at them, and I, I can't recall. I didn't have a problem with it when I was...
Last time I think it was updated was 1936, or something.
I would find that hard to believe, because I thought the file was like, it's like a, it's pretty high. I don't think they'd have it that high in 1936.
Does this sign, in your opinion, meet all the other requirements of that ordinance that were, that's being proposed?
Yes.
The only addition is, we do need to put the local ordinance number on the sign.
Which will be, which will be this one.
That's correct.
Okay. So we need to add that to the bottom. Okay, because Valerie had to leave early, but she was asking about that. So, okay.
That's the only thing we need.
I'll let her know that.
As a practical matter, not part of the ordinance, but we need to paint those two spaces green, to clarify clearly. Use a green epoxy paint, light green, and then that way, nobody can say, well, I didn't know if you'll put a green color there, and you put EV on it, or whatever, it'll just be more enhancement for those spaces.
I have a problem with the sign. It doesn't say compliments of Cameron Electric, Colonial Electric on the bottom there.
No, it doesn't.
We're silent workers.
Okay, you had your chance.
Thank you.
Yeah, I make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 18-03-13B, an ordinance regulating parking in electric vehicle charging station spaces designated for the charging of electric vehicles, with the proposed change to subparagraph C, where it should say, "A second sign shall And that could be a small sign below. That's my motion.
Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kilby. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay. Brings us to item C, under new business, contract to audit accounts. This is responding to a proposed contract with Martin, Starnes &amp; Associates, P.A. There is a suggested motion to approve this contract in the amount of $42,500, but I believe, and as I read the information in the package, there's some question as regards to the increase. This is the fifth year we've used this firm, and apparently, this increase is...
Very high.
Very, very high. And so, Sam, you want to speak a little bit to this, as to our ability to advertise it, or re-advertise it, or do something?
Well, you're correct on everything. Yeah, so the state, the LG, the local government commission requires units of government to have an audit, annual audit, by an independent auditor every year. And there's, there's like three different types of audit, depending on the, your size, the revenues that you receive, the state grants, federal grants, and there's like three levels. Lately, it's forced us into a second level, which is a little bit more detailed. Transparency isn't cheap. Also, in this, this contract, they have raised the rates. Now, the agreement, the LGC best practices, say you should stay with your auditor at least five years. A lot of units, they've had it, they've had their same auditor for over 30 years. Our rule of thumb is, we usually go out to bid every five years. And I was planning on going out to bid this coming January. That's usually, there's a, there's a timeline with it, and it's enough time for auditors to look at your town, you know, see what's involved. It's doable to go out to bid, it's going to be tight. My main concern would be trying to find enough auditors to be interested in a bid, and if you do award a bid to a new auditor, is that auditor, it's like a timing and commitment that you make.
How does this 425 compare to other towns our size, with our size budget? Do you have an idea?
It's a little high.
Comparatively speaking?
It's hard to compare Lake Lou or to anything, but it's a little high. It's, I think it's an increase of... it's a little high. It's, I think it's an increase of about fourteen thousand over last year.
Fourteen thousand.
Yeah. Some of it, some of it is the threshold of another audit, but a lot of it is increase in rates.
My problem is, is they've already got us on the books, they already know everything about us, so it should be easier for them on a repetitive basis to update the numbers. They've got the form, now it's just fill in the blank.
Right.
And I've got a hard time going from twenty-eight thousand to forty-two thousand.
Fifty percent.
Yeah, and it.
It's ludicrous.
I called them on that, and they didn't really give me.
They don't care.
Other than, it's the cost of doing business.
So, so the actual output deliverable from this audit is due in October?
Right, right.
So that's our limited, you know, we would have to select, or advertise, select, contract, and then give them the remainder of whatever time that is. And you're saying, it's tight, but it's possible. It's not impossible.
It's not impossible, right.
I was just thinking.
I just don't know what the quality.
For a first year of a new auditor, you know, we're jamming them.
It's, yeah, it's a lot of.
On a timeframe, you know, which is.
Otherwise, you're handing fourteen thousand dollars for, somebody's already got the forms on the computer.
Yeah.
It just drives me nuts.
Yeah, it is. It's aggravating, I'll tell you that, yeah. Does it bode well for their reselection next year?
What do you think about telling them we'll give them a five thousand bump over last year? If they want to take that, if not, we're going to bid it.
Doesn't hurt to ask. Yeah, it doesn't hurt to ask.
We don't have a lot of time to play, is it?
Yeah. It's a phone call I'll make tomorrow morning.
Just know that we did have an increase based on going into that second tier.
Right.
So it would only be fair to offer whatever that increase, some increase, yeah.
Yeah.
But, based on that.
Fourteen half?
I don't know, yeah.
Seven?
Yeah, just tell them fifty percent.
So what's the number? Because you can tell them that we set a not to exceed number of?
Of, what was forty-two, or was it forty-one five?
Forty-two five.
Thirty-five?
Yeah.
Thirty-five.
What was that, sorry?
Well, the old one was, what, twenty-eight, what, you know?
Okay, I'm not too good with numbers right now.
That's disturbing.
Don't let the prospective auditors know that.
Let's say thirty-five, thirty-six is reasonable.
Yeah.
I think we need to put a number, not a range. Is thirty-five good with everybody?
No, thirty-six.
Thirty-six. Like Steve says, thirty-six. Is thirty-six good with everybody?
All right, so we got a motion on this now? We need a motion on this? Could we just send him loose?
No, just give him direction.
All right, you got, all right, so, and then you'll immediately let us know. And if they say no, then are we authorizing him to go ahead and advertise for?
I would say so. We're authorizing him to spend up to thirty-six on an audit with this firm. If they don't go for that, we advertise and move as quickly as we can to get new bids in.
We can do that.
Does that make sense?
Yep. I can't see throwing that money away.
Very good. Okay, so.
Did we vote on them?
I don't think so. They said, just give them direction.
Actually, that would, that would help. If they agreed to the thirty-six, then we would have a vote already saying that you've accepted that audit contract, so.
That's great.
Yeah, I make a motion that if they, if they agree to do it to the thirty-six, that we go ahead and accept Martin Starnes and Associates.
All right, two seconds.
Hold on a second.
Commissioner Cameron seconds that. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. All right, we have item D, which is a crest for exemption from the Mountain Branch Library. This is to approve an exemption for the informational signage pursuant to our signage regulation. And I guess Brad, do you report on this? They want to hang some banners?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is, this is, this is, the section in question is ninety-two one five four B, that, excuse me, specifically states, "Signs of a government body, including traffic warning or regulatory signs or devices. These signs shall also include government signs, including building identification, directional information, and welcome signs. Signs of a government body other than the town of Lake Lure," and this is where this is coming in, "require council approval regardless of the type of sign unless otherwise exempted by federal or state law." What brings us here tonight is the Friends of the Library, which is the five oh one C three for the Mountain Branch Library, has six events. Currently, our community banner program, which is essentially administrative policy, it is not codified, it is not in the ordinance, allows for, it's, I have to read it. Eligible organizations are allowed to post their banners up to two times in a calendar year for a period of fifteen days. Some event organizers choose to utilize these two times back to back, and in that instance, the banners could be displayed for up to thirty days. Which is kind of analogous to our special sign section of our ordinance that talks about nonprofits, and having a period not to exceed thirty days at a place established by the zoning administrator. The Friends of the Mountain, the Friends of the Library, through their, through the librarian, who is a bona fide employee of Rutherford County Government, she is the one that made the request pursuant to this section. They are requesting, and the expectation is, they're having four events, they're going to be out of available community banner space at the end of those four events. Well, they've got six events. One of them's a chili cook-off, I believe, another one's something else. So there's not, they, by the policy that's in place, they can't have any more banner space. So they've seized on this as a possible way to do that. So a couple of things come with that. There's, I think there's an expectation on the part of the Friends of the Library, and Mr. Manager, help me if I'm getting something out of context here, but I think there's an expectation on Friends of the Library that they are trying to indeed get council's blessing, not only for their signs, but to have them on the dates they need on our community banner system. But they could also be making the request to hang these signs on the dates they request on two tomato steaks anywhere in town. And they've not made that request, and it's kind of, the inference is that they're wanting to use the community banner space. So it comes down to, you know, one of the things that I did when I first got here was, we really didn't have any rhyme or reason as to who got community banner space. With the help of Michelle, who's been awesome in this, we have established a Google Calendar. And on that Google Calendar, you know, we announced this year on the website, the community banner program is going to be first come, first served. With, with the understanding that any town message or any town thing that needs to go up supersedes everything. If we need to put something up, we can. And that's been working very, very well. We've got folks that are, that got the word, the word is out, you know, we have people come in here on day one. The former mayor came in with his Olympiad stuff on January the first, got that in. Some other, some other agencies, Flowering Bridge has been very diligent about getting their stuff in. But, you know, this, this is, you know, the desire of this exemption is specific to, in their minds, the community banner locations. I guess what I'm saying is, you don't have to limit it to that. If for some reason you wanted to say, they could put their signs up somewhere, they certainly could. But that's basically what it's about. And I don't know if I've made it worse or easier to understand. It's a, it took me about six months and a lot of coaching by Michelle, just for me to get my hands around the community banner program. And I think at the end of the day, we probably really need to look at actually, you know, getting this into a regulation in some way that we've, that we've, that we've got some oversight on it.
Because the exemption itself is what's important to the library.
Yes, sir.
That's right.
Yes, sir. The exemption that, they want to advertise their two final events. I can't let them put up the community banners pursuant to this policy. You guys can let them do whatever they want to do. Their expectation is that they get the community banner spot. We're speaking with Valerie earlier today, and the manager also, and I had some conversation. That is somewhat coinciding with the time of the World Equestrian Games. The town has committed to having top row, welcome, weigh folks to our community on this, on that spot. It may be that if you guys are willing to do this with the Friends of the Library, which, you know, it's not even the Friends of the Library, this is a request from Rutherford County. If you're willing to do that and give them that space, then basically that area is tied up. Or any version thereof that you want to do.
We've got, what, two, two places we can do this?
Four.
Four?
Yes.
And.
Two banners each place.
What are they doing at their own facility? Because they're not in the town limits.
That's correct.
These ordinances don't affect them at their facility.
That's correct.
So do we know what they're doing there regarding banners?
No, sir, I do not.
For those extra events?
They have, they have a, what is it, the menu signs where they put up their.
That's right.
The notifications, yeah.
I mean, they could probably put their banner on the two tomato steaks there.
Right, right. I mean, you know, again, they're here tonight as, they've recognized, well, I can't see any, there's, you know, this is, this is a viable exemption. This is a, this is a thing that they, that the governing body can approve for another, for another government. And that's what they're here asking for. They're asking.
What's your recommendation? Opinion to the.
Well, I, you know, in looking at it holistically, I mean, they're, you know, if Chimney Rock Village had an event that would be something that the town would be interested in putting, and they do have things that they put on our community banners. But if it was something that exceeded their allowable, their allowable allotment, if you will, of spaces, and it was something that we would deem, or the governing body would deem to be an economic development incentive, or something good for the community, they could certainly come and utilize the same thing. Pope County could come do the same thing, you know, it's just.
I would wade in here with a couple of comments, because I'm a frequent user of these community banner signs for various events. I'm associated with.
Yes, sir.
The arts and crafts festivals, with Hickory Nut Forge Outreach, the Dirty Dancing Festival, and the, there's a couple of others when we have the chamber. My, I've questioned this policy since it was enacted. I think it's well, it's organized and it's well intentioned. But I can tell you that there, I observed there are many, many periods of time when our banner stands are simply displaying the town banners. Or, in the absence of that, I understand, and I don't know exactly how this falls through the crack, I guess we have some relationship with the Flowering Bridge, that they can use those banners if they're not used for some other purpose. And with all due respect to the mayor, former mayor and the Olympiad, I noticed those banners seem to be up a hell of a lot longer than the allowable periods. Having said all that, you know, the whole purpose of us putting up those stanchions was not to advertise the town of Lake Lure. It was to inform our citizens when there are events going on in the town. And unless we find that those four banner stands with eight spaces are being overrun by colliding events, that, that because of the durations we've granted, and maybe, Michelle, you could comment on that. If that's not going on, then I'm all for flexing our policy for things like this to allow worthwhile organizations to display their events for reasonably longer periods of time.
They're asking for just this year?
Yes, sir, just this, just this year.
Yeah, like I said, it's not on the burden.
Supporting that for, yeah.
Do it this year and see what. Just for discussion, and it may sound heartless, but I don't intend it to be that way, but once you open the door for this one exemption, then you're going to be opening the door for other exemptions. So is the correct answer to refine the policy to a lesser time for each entity? Or somehow redesign the policy that might accommodate stuff like this?
Well, one thing that was interesting is you mentioned the World Equestrian Games. During that time, everybody, and you're saying, if we permit this, nobody else will have any space during that time period?
It is my understanding that the town has committed to all the top banner spaces at all locations as a, as a welcome to our community, whatever.
Our banners.
Our banners.
But it still leaves four.
It still leaves four places.
Lower tier for others.
And during this time, this is one of the timeframes, as I understand it, I've actually got a calendar here, that the Friends of the Library, is, or Rutherford County folks are looking into, as well as, there's a little bit of overlap with the Flowering Bridge folks. To Mr. Wedder's comment, this exemption, as stated in the ordinance, is only available to another government. You have to be, it's got to be, and in this case, it is, it is a Rutherford County government official. Yeah, they're benefiting by the Friends of the Library's five oh one C three efforts to them, but Rutherford County is the one that signed the letter, and they're the ones that brought this forward. So, you know, I don't think that we could, I don't think there's, the ordinance would allow for, you know, just any five oh one C three to come in. And I told Ms. Sharp, when I originally spoke with her about this, that you can't be the applicant on this. This has to be Rutherford County, which they were more than willing to do.
And Brad, there really isn't a timeframe associated with that, so.
No, sir.
To me, the exemption is an exemption. They would retain that exemption for the foreseeable future, wouldn't they?
They could, or you could, you could limit it. They're asking for a finite period of time.
Set a limit, doesn't it?
We could do it for a year. We could set that limit and see if, and if there's no problem with it, then we could look at extending, or if there's.
Well, he says they're just.
Yeah, they're asking for a block of time. They're asking for a specific block of time. So.
That's often unavailable.
Yeah, yep. There may be a scheduling conflict with a little bit, a couple of days with the Flowering Bridge folks. But we need to talk about getting them to earn a sign anyway. That's another story.
If you look at September twentieth through the twenty-seventh, that's the end of the Equestrian Games, zero. Equestrian Games start on the eleventh and run for two weeks. So there's, well, that's right at the tail end of that, and then the next time's in October. So I don't see those dates as being conflicting with anything. So I would just make it specific.
Just keep it specific. These dates according to the calendar that Michelle keeps, and again, bless you for doing this. The Mountain Branch Library, we, 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 as tentatively as you can pencil something in digitally, we put them in with the understanding contingent upon council approval. So they're, they're wanting to start up on the twentieth and run through all their banners through the twenty-seventh. So that's going to take up the bottom of all the banners. And we are, the town will be on top at that time. So banners will be sewed up at that time, if that's what, if that's what council is equitable to.
I think it's fine.
We make a motion, we approve it with those specific dates only. And.
Second, I'll second.
Second, thank Commissioner Moore. All right, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign?
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Brad. All right, that brings us to item E, which we touched on in the Marine Council meeting earlier, that this is a proposal to change the starting times for both the town council meetings and on a quarterly basis, our Marine Council meetings to start an hour earlier for each of those meetings, starting the town council meetings at five o'clock rather than six o'clock, and the Marine Commission meetings at four o'clock rather than five o'clock. We heard one member of the public speak, and the position is that that would inhibit those in the community who are working to attend these meetings.
I'll speak to that, if you feel like. It's my, it was my idea. I'm the one that brought that up about changing the times for the town council meeting from six o'clock to five o'clock, which would also make the Marine Commission quarterly meeting go to four o'clock. Several reasons that I feel that way. Number one, I don't think you're going to have a time that perfectly fits everybody's schedule, regardless of when you have it. Number two, I think from a staff standpoint, it would prevent some longer days that they have because of that. I think if you turn around and look in this room right now, you can see that there's two, four, six, eight people still in the audience.
four, six, eight people still in the audience, and three of those are staff members. So maybe it would get more people participate because we start earlier, and remember, we are a retirement community, and, you know, it's getting close to my bedtime, I'm not sure about yours, but I think it would, would possibly create more participation in the meetings to move the meetings up. And I think anybody that's interested enough to want to be here one evening, one day a month, can make that sacrifice of one hour of being able to get here whenever we start the meetings at the published time. And there's nothing in this motion that suggests that the doors will be locked.
Yep. We also broadcast the meetings. You can, you know, pick them up on YouTube, the town website, or both.
Correct.
Yeah, you get the archived ones off YouTube. So we are broadcasting, and a lot of municipalities that have their meetings, you know, actually during the, during regular business hours before five o'clock aren't broadcasting, but we are, so that's, I think we're. I agree, I agree with John.
Any else have a position on this?
No, I don't have any problem with it. If they feel we could do is try it for a while and see how it works.
Yeah, I really could, I don't care. Their time works for me, but I think it's a good point to look out and say, you know what, if we could start an hour earlier and finish an hour, maybe more of the audience would stay, you know.
Look at, you got two towns staff in here all night.
Well, yeah, yeah.
There's exempted.
Three.
Great.
Four.
She sleeps here all night.
Four.
All right.
Regarding, regarding the staff, I made that recommendation at the retreat to where their, the agendas are set up with them earlier in the process, so they could get done and get out of here. And that would take care of a lot of that. We have the next to the last item, something staff has to present. That could be earlier in the agenda. I don't know how we're determining the priority of what goes on the agenda, but if we could get staff early in that agenda, get them out of here earlier, and that'd take care of that aspect of it. For me, a time change is not an issue, but for some citizens, it would be. And I'm gonna say that, and I hear you, John, but I have to disagree with it for the reasons stated, so.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
All right, John?
I'll make the motion to approve the new starting time to five P.M. for town council meetings, and the new starting time to four P.M. for the Marine Commission meetings.
All right. We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
A second by Commissioner Moore? All right, so we have a motion and a second. More discussions?
I'd just like to make a comment. I hope that the people that unfortunately are not here now have hopefully realized in the three meetings now that we've had, not counting the split meeting in December, that this council is making a very specific attempt to be open and to be honest and to be outward, put everything out in every possible way that we possibly can. And I think more participation and people being able to be here longer will be a good thing.
All right. Okay, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No. Commissioner. Okay, so that then brings us to our final item on the agenda, again, is the two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty-three capital improvements plan. No motion is requested or suggested at this time. Ron, what further discussion or action do we need?
No, I always put this at the end of the agenda just to give you all an opportunity, if you heard anything during the public hearing, to give me any direction. Since we had no comments, then the only thing I'll ask is if you would like to hold another special meeting to consider specific projects, if you'd like to invite the department head. Again, we have, what, thirty days, I guess, until your next meeting for adoption, so.
We're supposed to adopt this at a council meeting in May. I mean, April.
April.
Last year, we did have a special council meeting to discuss prioritization of things on that summary list, and with the department heads there, they were able to answer questions that we had about them. And I really think we should do that again this year. As to a proposed date, I don't know exactly. Let me see here.
The county's exposed, Dan.
How about, how about, well, the first week of April, of course, there's a, a utility board and also a parts and wreck board, but that leaves Wednesday and Friday open. The second week, Monday, you got the L.A.B., and what happens that second Tuesday?
Let me, could I just say that staff is normally really busy with the different meetings going on, putting agendas together and scheduling.
So you're looking at the last.
So I, either the, yeah, next week or the last week would be preferable for staff, I believe.
Well, we go ahead and do it next week. Gives more time for preparation once everything's done.
We got zoning and planning on Tuesday, nothing on Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday as far as meetings that I'm aware of.
I'm out of town Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday.
Thursday, then. Fridays are always bad, that's.
Thursday, the twenty-second.
Monday, the nineteenth is open, as far as I know. I mean, there's no meetings I'm aware of.
Yeah, I'm not here that day.
John's gone.
How about Wednesday?
Thursday. I'm not here Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday.
All right, how about Thursday, the twenty-second?
Could probably do it on the twenty-second.
I can do it anytime that day on the twenty-second.
Yep. Same way here. What time y'all want to start?
Morning would be better.
Okay. Nine o'clock or twenty-second? Sound good?
Yep.
Nine A.M.?
Nine A.M.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I guess we'll ask.
I make the motion that we schedule a special council meeting for discussion of the capital improvement plan program with department heads on March twenty-second, beginning at nine o'clock in the morning.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. Commissioner Cameron? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Second, opposed, same sign? All right, so we do a special, and that brings us to our adjournment.
I'll make the motion, we adjourn.
All right, Commissioner Cameron makes the motion, a second. Commissioner Moore?
Weber.
Weber, excuse me. All right, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
And that's, yeah, I'll keep telling them. It's gonna happen.
Well, I think it's a discussion we should have.